All right. Well, welcome everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting of the KCRJ implementation board to order. And like to start by grounding us our work in our. Okay, so I just got an email. Sorry to interrupt us. Austin, Ben is trying to get in. If you can just check the public chat for any of our board members.
Yes, I see Ben now.
Okay, that's standing. Let's keep a close eye on that in case anything else shows up. I apologize for for breaking off there just as we were talking about our core mission, which is that we start by grounding our work in our theory of change, which is the following. That if we create a homeless response system that centers people lived experience, then we'll be able to focus on responding needs and eliminating inequities in order to end homelessness for all. So we'll be holding this special meeting remotely and it is publicly broadcasted.
What is going on?
That sounded like Christopher.
Hey, Christopher.
Hi, Christopher. Welcome.
And Ben's able to make it great. Okay, we're gonna have Austin go and call our role for us.
Awesome. Sweet. Member Anderson. Member Caminos.
Here.
Member Carvalho.
Present.
Member Schelmanak.
Here.
Member merits.
Present.
Member spotted elk. See her.
And she wrote in that she is here.
Awesome. Perfect. My screen decided to act up. One sec. Member McHenry Jr.
Present.
Member Pat now.
Here.
Member ready?
Present.
Member Rankin. And not hearing and member Ross.
Present.
Awesome. And we do have Quorum.
Right. Thank you, Austin. We'll go and move forward then. And I also like to make sure that we acknowledge that King County is located on the unceded traditional lands of the Coast Salish peoples. We honor this land and its people past and present, and we're committed to directing funding and resources to organizations led by in support of native and indigenous people. We're grateful. Actually, before we jump into the next piece, I also want to take a moment to to just thank one of our former board members publicly. The Michael Ramos had his last board session with us this past week at our retreat, and I just wanted to thank him for his work both on this board and for the community over these last decades, working both in the church council and other ways to help support the community. So we're all deeply grateful to him and wish him well in his retirement. We'll move on to our next and only item really. We'll continue on to a briefing prepared by our authority staff. So Meg Barclay, Tiffany Brooks, and I believe Jeff Sims as well. Will be speaking to us on the annual budget recommendation to the city of Seattle and King County. Meg, Tiffany, are you all available?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start presenting Mark unless there's anything you want to say before we get going.
Thank you, Meg.
Okay. Gonna try. Here we go. Can everyone see? Yes, we can see it. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna try and. All right, so here is the, we are gonna go through the budget deck. All the way through, we didn't get a chance to do that last time we were together, so I will start with an agenda for this presentation. We provide some context around the current year budget. New funding that was approved by our funders, accomplishments in this year and last year. One-time funding, some other context being one-time funding programs that are currently operating with one-time funding that's not continued in 2024. And an overview of RHA staffing need. We've also will go through what has been approved for the RHA in 2024, which is, as we did discuss in our last meeting, the second year of funding approved in city of Seattle and King County two-year budgets and other other funding sources as well. And then we have sort of flushed out the recommendations as well for your for your review in action. Excuse me. So starting with context, accomplishments in 22 and 23, Partnership for Zero Implementation, State of Seattle, Right-of-Way Funding, the North King County, our first inter-local agreement besides the city and the county, city of Seattle and King County. So one encompassing North King County, including Bothell, Lake Forest Park, Kenmore, Shoreline, and Woodinville. We completed the first year, first full year of system administration in 2022, executed more than 260 contracts with providers, spent more than $130 million in the community. Our spend rates were quite good compared to past years. We're really proud of getting as much money as possible out into the community. And our first year financial audit from the state of Washington is clean, complete completed in August 2022, as you remember. This was our 2023 budget, just highlighting what our base award was and inflation funding provided by the city of Seattle. And then one-time enhancement funding provided by King County that was used to address inflation in 2023 in 2023. And so then our total budget there of about 228 million and 228 and a half million dollars. Some incremental changes that were included as part of the two-year budget funding starting this year was sustained funding for the Soto Shelter and housing and emergency needs, a little bit of an incremental increase over the 2023 amount. The service and funding changes expected in 2024, as I discussed, about $9.3 million is needed to maintain the current level of service of programs that are currently funded with one-time funding that's expiring in 2020, at the end of 2023. There's also 4.9 million for five programs that are funded with one-time funding through 2024. Then this is a little bit different. There is funding through the end of 2024. The sort of question we're asking right now because these programs haven't been transitioned to the RHA yet is whether the RHA should assume administration of these contracts in 23 and then just to wind them down at the end of 24. And then Partnership for Zero, we plan to transfer Partnership for Zero costs to Medicaid reimbursement in 24. And we estimate about 85% of Partnership for Zero costs will be reimbursed by Medicaid, which leaves a bit of a little bit of a gap in those funds, but we plan to monitor 2023 spending and when we make our carry forward request of 20 to carry 2023 underspent in a 2024, we would prioritize this gap so that Partnership for Zero stays fully funded.
Meg, can I, can we ask questions along the way for this one?
Sure.
Can you go back to the previous slide? So in the programs that are expiring, the center what's the downside to leaving them where they're at and not taking them over and then having them sunset? It feels like it. I'm just curious about the administrative lift to assume them and take them on and then they expire as opposed to, can they stay where they're at?
Yeah, that's why we sort of flagged these. We wanted to, if there, if it looks like, oh, I don't know, Mark, I think it looks like Mark has a response to that.
I think we're gonna say the same thing, Meg. I think we are discussing with the county right now whether or not that transition makes sense. And I think part of the discussion is really, you know, hinging on whether or not the county sees the possibility to continue this programming because to your point, Christopher, I think that the RHA is in the position of saying that assuming administrative responsibility for something just to wind it down is not something that we have the staffing or capacity to do versus, you know, incorporating it into our ongoing programming.
Yeah, we're learning a lot about the pain of winding things down right now. So is that okay? Chris, can I move, Chris? Yeah, sure. No problem. So this describes a little bit more of the sources of funds for those programs. We did provide a little bit more granular detail on the budget in the budget schedules in response to feedback in past years, trying to provide a little more insight. Schedule A describes projects funded with one-time funds. If you wanted to see, those are projects that are currently funded with that funding. And the last piece of context we prepared is this kind of overview of the distribution of kind of functions of RHA staff. And what this really illustrates is about 60, 60 and a half percent of positions at the RHA provide direct service to either unhoused neighbors, and that's our systems advocate program and workforce or service providers, which is the programs and performance staff that are really supporting the work of those service providers to deliver services. But in contrast, and these are the slices of the pie that are in green, we have about 1.6% of positions that support people operations, 4.8% support financial operations and 13.7 support the the work of the CEO on policy strategy and planning, that our ability is to be as thoughtful as we possibly can about program design and the different types of work that we are doing in the community. So we'll go next into what has been approved in, oh, Christopher, I see that you.
Can you again, can you, the percentages are helpful, but can you say what is the aggregate total headcount right now?
Right now, we are at about 110 currently staffed, and I wanted to have these numbers right next to me at the, but I don't to restart my computer right before we started this because it was freezing on me and that that window I didn't open back up again. So yeah, we're at about 110. Our head count's a little higher than that. We're finishing off the hiring of the last vacant positions on the system advocate workforce, which are included in that 35 and a half percent. They're just not fully, they're just not. Those positions aren't are vacant right now. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Meg, sorry. Could you just clarify for us again what people operations mean?
Oh, it's our HR, our, our human resources work, and that includes all of the hiring, onboarding. It's a lot of things handling. Like as Mark has said, we could go into a closed session and talk to you about how much work this is for the, you know, very small number of staff that we have, but with the workforce that we have created, which is super dynamic and and really, really great. There comes a lot of unexpected challenges that are take up a lot of time. So, but yes, that's our, that's our, our HR function. Thanks for asking, Simha. The city of Seattle 2024 approved funding is provided here by source and laid out in more detail in schedule B of the additional documents that were provided. And then we have King County, similarly, the funding by source. Also more detailed in the in the docs provided. And then this is the proposed budget. It's in schedule C of the additional documents that were provided along with the presentation. You see here, we we note that that deficit in Partnership for Zero due to the unreimbursed or anticipated unreimbursed Medicaid expenses. And also just wanted to note in here that the the Department of Commerce Right-of-Way Funding right now anticipates a request that we have into the the Department of Commerce to carry forward some funding that we expect to go and spent by the end of June. And if that that amount is still subject to legislative action, but this is, this would be the most that we would expect to have in our budget in 2020, 2024. This is our operations. Our operations budget, we have 2022 compared to 2023 and a little bit of notations where you see some changes there about some ship mostly due to shift between categories and some funding that we have in the 2023 budget that won't be needed in 2024, once the system rebid is complete. And lastly, we have a comparison between the 2023 and 2024 budget and some explanation of net changes. I would say most notably, you'll see in the permanent supportive housing line item about a third of the way down. There's a $20 million increase there. That is because all of the contracts previously administered by King County, when King County was the continuum of care lead, will be under administration of the RHA by 2024. And this is largely due to the permanent supportive housing contracts that will be transitioning over to the RHA. As their county contracts expire, they will be initiating RHA contracts for those funds. And so this isn't represent a net increase to the system. It is, it's just a change in who's administering the money that we've been, that the system has been getting all along. And so walking through the recommendations, we have three recommendations today. Approve the proposed 2024 budget totaling 250 million, $13,983. And then two requests to that the RHA be instructed to discuss during the budget deliberations, supplemental funding of that up to that $14.2 million amount for those currently operating programs that are supported with one-time funds. And during and then also instructing us to discuss funding for those for additional RHA staff, which we will lay out in more detail coming up. This is the budget that we would request approval for. Author instructing us to transmit to the governing committee and authorizing us to submit this proposed budget to the city and the county. It's due June 1st. Again, instructing us to discuss regularizing this one-time funding and the funding specific to King County is whether we should actually assume administration of those programs if they are going to end at the end of 2024. And just noting, schedule A provides that detail. And this lays out a little bit more about the positions, 11 positions that we are would like to discuss with our funders about about supporting, one being a people operations director, a whole lot has changed about the workforce since we designed the RHA, including the size of the workforce. We didn't initially anticipate the level of direct services happening with the Systems Advocate Program. There's a lot of other items that just come from having a workforce of this size. And then a couple of support, support positions for that, a people operations coordinator and a specialist. Also, that creates more of a career ladder in that in that division, which is always good. People see an opportunity for advancement. In finance, we recommend adding a chief financial officer to be able to focus time specifically and exclusively on financing, including budgeting and forecasting, but also raising in a more more dedicated way with our funders and then a couple of financial analysts. Also, because of the level of information and the complexity of our budget, you saw how many funding sources there are, what they are for, head funding is no joke, especially the COC. Having folks who can help to analyze data and spending trends provide more timely information to funders and internal and external stakeholders, including our boards, will be a really valuable thing for us to go forward as we mature as an organization. And then lastly, positions for CEO policy, strategy and planning. Beefing up our policy team, allowing us to more aggressively and effectively develop and implement policies related to our initiatives. One of these includes regularizing the senior director of policy position, which is currently grant funded and it requires ongoing funding. And the adding, adding, actually, funding for three policy coordinators, one of which is currently grant funded and does with them and requires ongoing funding and then adding two additional FTEs. And then lastly, a permanent position for Housing Central Command Manager, leading the work of the Housing Central Command Operations, coordinating with the operational teams and ensuring that barriers to housing are elevated and resolved as we go through this process. Having somebody dedicated to managing that process. So this is just to restate our three recommendations for action today. And now we move on to discussion. So I will stop sharing my screen. And we can go.
Yeah. Well, fellow board members, questions? Thoughts? Member McHenry?
Probably a very basic question. Reflecting on the plan to see Medicaid reimbursement for some of the Partnership for Zero expense, I guess. Is the person that submits the claims for Medicaid reimbursement already hired? And is that person the RHA staff member?
Yes, so we have actually hired, there was a position in in the initial budget for Partnership for Zero. It's currently grant funded to actually do that coordination of Medicaid reimbursement. We've also been working with the Corporation for Supportive Housing on building the infrastructure. The accounting staff person who was in the budget has been hired. She has a lot of experience with Medicaid reimbursement and other organizations, which is great. And so we are are feeling good about about that, that infrastructure being in place and trying to get as prepared as possible. Another part of that work is actually starting. I think we will start. We are actually set up as we could be submitting for reimbursement. We plan to start doing that this year so that we are at a good scale when we get to the beginning of 2024.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
I gotta add a question for you. You know, with all like with the wide variety of programs we have, like one of our core missions is ensuring that you know, contracts are signed with all these different providers and that invoices get paid on time, etc. Do we have the staffing? Does this improve our ability to do that, like in the chief financial officer, the financial analyst piece?
Yeah, the contracts team is now in the financial, in the financial team. It wasn't included in that finance pie slice in the graphic. But yeah, we have, we have a great team there. We actually do have a couple of additional positions that were added this year that are being hired as well. Our, our, that our invoice payment rate is getting better all the time. I'm sorry, I just didn't see you had raised your hand before I started talking. Go ahead.
No, I think one of the things that I mentioned yesterday in the budget committee meeting and would just lift up again is that so unlike the city or the county, RHA does not have the other administrative support of other departments, right? So in other city and county functions, for example, right, like the like HSD does not run its own payroll. That is a separate function that is held at a different, in a different city agency entirely, right? It is RHA is unique in that like we are responsible for both the administration of all of the contracting and the invoicing and the work that we do with providers and our funders, and we are also responsible for our own internal administrative function. And so the team that Meg is referencing not only handles, you know, the contracting, the invoicing, working to invoice our various funders, working to make sure that, you know, the the dollars are flowing in and out of the King County Treasury on on time, closing those books, reporting the closures of those books to the funders. They are also responsible for running payroll every two weeks, ensuring that folks are properly on boarded, ensuring that folks' retirement funds are set up correctly like. So all of that, that work sits on a, you know, small but mighty team of really, really dedicated and, you know, hardworking, late in the night working staff. And so I think it's, it's really important that we acknowledge that significant structural difference between RHA and how city and county agencies are able to operate. And, you know, just the the need to continue to grow our capacity in that space. And similarly, right, like HR, while each agency at the city and county has an HR function, there is a chief people operations officer for the county. There is a human resources division for the city. That is, it's a, it is a separate agency, right? We don't have that. We, we again have a small but mighty team that's really doing a lot of of complex work. But, you know, they, many of those folks, with the exception of just a few, are more operations and came into more operations roles than they did to HR roles. And as Meg alluded to, we have an increasingly complex array of HR functions that we need to execute on. Again, I would be happy to brief the board on some of those if we go into executive session for the reason of discussing personnel. But I just wanted to flag those those differences and really lift up. The team does incredible work and works really hard, but we are structurally different from our funders in really significant ways.
Thank you, Mark. And to see John and then Ben.
Just real quickly on the Medicaid reimbursement. So is this working? How much are we guaranteed that we will be able to get that Medicaid reimbursement so that the funds are there? Is that a 100%? Is that a 90%? Or is that a 50% shot? If you understand what I'm saying, because I just don't know how it works.
We asked a lot. We tried to get more of a an estimate from other folks that are doing this around the rate of Medicaid reimbursement, and people were really, really reluctant to kind of set an expectation one way or the other, I think. So we based on conversations with CSH, we felt comfortable setting it at that 85%. It's really going to depend on, you know, this, this year, training folks to make sure that case notes are really accurate, that we are, you know, as we have, we have a little bit of runway to practice and get our, you know, get everybody's skills lined up so that we are ready to, you know, invoice at scale. But yeah, it is kind of a black box. It's sort of strange. So we are comfortable that that's a good number, but we're not going to know until we start doing it and we build a better and better understanding of what a successful reimbursement package is.
So what sort of safeguards do we put in place then to see whether or not that is at that 85% level or not? Because I assume if it's not, we're going to have to draw money from somewhere else.
I would say, first of all, like if we start doing it this year, then that is revenue we're bringing in this year that can cushion any under reimbursement next year. And so that's that is something we, but it is something we are going to have to be, you know, tracking really closely and and, you know, working really hard to make sure that staff are properly equipped to create the the backup for for a successful reimbursement.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Can I just briefly, so the the team is preparing right now to do a series of dry runs, which we won't actually be billing, but will be submitting all the documentation and seeing what gets declined. And so we're gonna do, I think, at least two dry runs. And then we'll make corrections. We'll train people who need to be, you know, retrained, etc. To ensure that the case notes are appropriate. So we're not trying to go straight, we're not trying to turn it on like a light switch. We're trying to ensure that we are getting the right feedback from CMS on whether or not we are submitting the right materials. And then we'll make course corrections and then we'll start billing. And so that process, I think, will give us some ample time to correct anything that is going wrong in our billing packages. And that 85% reimbursement rate is, I think, as Meg noted, a little middle of the road, maybe a little conservative. I think that there were some estimates that we got that were like, you know, this will help you rain money. And then there were other estimates that were like, this will get you two nickels. One of the things that we did that was quite helpful was we looked at the FCS enrollment and reimbursement rates from other counties across the state that are currently utilizing this as a fund source. And then based our projections off of those, in addition to looking at the FCS enrollment and reimbursement rates within King County and noting, frankly, some of the areas where we think people are underbilling, looking at how we might, you know, then maximize our billing and then ran all of that past our technical assistance provider. So I think that we are, are, you know, well-prepared from an administrative perspective to capture this revenue.
And Tiffany just pointed out to me over chat too, that we will have, we are in money into next year that can cushion as we are ramping up as well.
Thanks. Thanks for that discussion. Ben, I see you next.
Thanks. So I, I have, I have some technical questions here, you know, on the Medicare thing. I asked the CSH leader, who was providing technical assistance, when we had a meeting with her as part of the Systems Planning Committee, asked her point blank, is this something we should be including in our long-term plans? And she said, no. And so I'm surprised to see it not only in our long-term plans, but also in our short-term budget. And every service provider I've spoken with who's been trying to do this has been very skeptical. So while I'm, I, I support more federal funding for homelessness in our region, 100%, it doesn't, it doesn't seem appropriate to be including as a revenue source in the budget. And I have other technical issues here, such as the numbers don't seem to add up, right? The the budget is 250 million, but the total confirmed spending is 249 million. You know, I don't, not sure what that means, perhaps you have an answer for it. But I think my, my question really is a broader one, which is, this is a budget that was basically a continuation of what we started in 2022, when we set the 23 budget. We have really pivoted a lot of our strategy over the last the last six months even, as we thought about how to achieve our goal of bringing everybody inside. We now have a five-year plan that is very different from where we started due to input from a lot of community members that is really focused on on bringing people inside to remove the risk of further harm. And my, my only question really is, why haven't our program priorities changed? And why, why are we locking ourselves into now a spending framework through the end of 2024? When we know a lot more than we did when we first set this in 2022? And I understand that we're in the second half of a biennial budget process. But this is a crisis. And I think that our funders and everybody else would be totally understanding if we were to say that we've learned things and we want to reevaluate and we want to change the way we're spending money. And I, I have some ideas for how to change the money, change our spending priorities. I'm sure that everybody here does, and the people who are closest to to it, those with the experience probably have many, many more ideas to share. But it doesn't feel like we're having that that discussion around this budget. This just feels like a, a check the box exercise. And the only really substantive changes that we're talking about here are adding staffing into the the RHA. You know, this resolution says that we're going to instruct the RHA to go get money for staffing. That's fine, but you know, shouldn't we also be instructing the RHA to go and get more money for emergency shelters? We, we have this hotel crisis that is going on right now where where people are stuck in these expensive hotel shelters and there's nowhere else to move them. That, that, why aren't we looking for more money for that? You know, I, I just feel like this is a steady-as-she-go's budget in a time of crisis where we all have so many more ideas for how, how we can improve things. So I guess the question I have here for Mark and for Meg and for everybody else is, as we continue to evolve the five-year plan and lock that in, as we continue to learn, what room for flexibility do we have? How are we going to be able to continue to adjust to, to meet the very, very real need that is out there right now?
You know, thanks, Ben. As I, as I said yesterday in the Budget Committee meeting, you know, I, I would disagree with your characterization of what happened or what the CSH staff said to you, but that's neither here nor there. I think, you know, as I said yesterday, this is a biennial budget. And KCRJ did make a number of extremely, I think, we think, important asks. The funders allocated what they were able to fund. We also received, you know, pretty significant incremental adjustments upwards inside a broader, you know, fiscal downturn for the city and the county. We have been held harmless multiple times as other revenue has dried up. And we hear and read daily in the paper that, you know, there are significant revenue concerns for the region. And KCRJ has not been asked to even run cut exercises. So I think the will of the funders is really clear to continue to invest as possible. I think they've also been clear in discussion at the Governing Committee and in other places that KCRJ staff need to identify pathways to revenue outside of the region. It's one of the reasons why the team is really focused on bringing in entitlement dollars, some of which are attached to Medicaid, although there are others to support folks who are experiencing homelessness. And I think it's really important that inside all of that context that we recognize that when we have created this really good relationship with our primary funders, that we have engaged with them in good faith about, you know, the structure of a biennial budget that we put that into the MSA, that we made big asks, that we got some of it as anticipated, but not all of it. That to pivot from that inside this moment would not be in good faith. And so I would caution the board not to do that. Of course, it is your decision and, you know, we are subject to it.
But Mark, sorry, thank, thank you for that. May I respond or ask a follow-up question? So I hear what you're saying. And I, I think it is responsible to have a budget that is, you know, roughly within the the guidance of what the funders have available to spend. And it, it is a mark of confidence that the funders are continuing to invest in in us. But I, I want to give you tremendous credit for the flexibility and the pivoting that the authority has done over the last year as you have learned. Are you concerned that there's more changes that you want to make? More things, new programs or different types of things? Are there certain things that haven't worked in the last year that we want to try and wind down, shift towards things that aren't working? I, I don't want to get into like a philosoph, into a specific debate about things on this list that may or may not be working. But wouldn't, wouldn't you want more flexibility to be able to go and say, here's how we think we should spend, different ways of allocating the dollars that we have, especially given the five-year plan and the direction and the fact that we're going into a contract rebid where we're going to hopefully get more efficiency in certain areas, get more clarity in others. I, I, I want to give you the tools for you to continue to be flexible and do the work that you need to do and to achieve our, our joint mission here. But that's really my, my goal. So are you comfortable with the way this is? Or perhaps do you have a plan to be able to innovate even within this, this budget framework that we're inheriting from, from last year?
I think that it's always the rule of executive branch agencies to do the best that they can within the constraints that are appropriately placed on them by legislatures and funder, right? And to the extent that the RHA receives, you know, the funding from all of the fund sources that we get, it doesn't just come inscribed with the intent of our executive branch partners. It also comes inscribed with the intent, often in the statutory language, of the legislative bodies that fund us. So again, to the extent that, you know, I or any member of the RHA staff have a disagreement with a particular program type, it is funded often at the line item level with statutory language that instructs us, instructs us rather, to implement a specific thing. Our freedom is in the ability to design the program model in partnership with our provider colleagues to evaluate the efficacy of programs and to prioritize always that a program do its best to quickly move people on to permanent housing. That's how the RHA staff at the policy level do our job inside the appropriate constraint provided by the other branches of government.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood your answer to your question. I, I just, you know, the, the real, I, I guess what we're, maybe what you're saying is this is like a, a funding level and that we're going to design programs within this that are going to have the maximum impact under whatever structure we're given, and this is the structure that we've been given. And we're going to go and do the work. So it, to, to design that is, if that's the case, will there be a detailed operating plan showing how we can increase our effectiveness, increase the positive outcomes that we want under this, this framework? And is that going to be part of the process as we get to the final budget? I'm, is my question clear?
I'm, I'm not sure that it's clear, but I, you know, so I will just say, you know, my perspective, I think the perspective of our RHA staff is that we will implement what we are funded to do and we will evaluate the programs, our provider colleagues stand up against the metrics that are laid out, that are currently utilized and that are laid out in the five-year plan. And to the extent that, you know, something isn't working, you know, we'll provide technical assistance. We'll evaluate whether or not the program model is correct. And, you know, ultimately, if need be, make significant recommendations. I think some of those recommendations, again, were inside our previous budget proposal last cycle when we were kicking off the the biennial, right? So we made significant asks around emergency housing. We made a significant ask around increasing the provider wages, significant ask around expanding the outreach continuum. And again, some of those things were funded. So, you know, I, I think that like we have been clear about the direction that the system needs to go in, our perspective around it. I think as we continue to grow as an, as an agency, we'll develop more of an evidence base that the things that we are suggesting are correct. I think the funders are receptive to those conversations. But again, ultimately, I think if the question is, you know, do I think that we should, you know, have more flexibility than the, the branches of government allow executive agencies? I, I think that's above my pay grade.
Yeah, I, I did go back and look at the budget presentations from, from previous years before I was part of this board, after your, our conversation yesterday, Mark. And I think that's really what I was looking for is more of like a revisiting of that and saying, this is what we intended to get in terms of the outcomes per dollar spent and, you know, the bet turnover in the, the beds, all that kind of stuff, those good operational metrics. And then to look at that and say, okay, here's what we planned, here's what we got, here's how we're going to adjust. And, you know, if I look at this matrix of programs, there's a certain amount for transitional housing, a certain amount for rehousing, for prevention. Is that the right mix? I, I just don't know the answer to that without any of that data. So I, I, I've taken up a lot of time. I, I would just really hope that we can, over the course of this budget process, which I understand this is the beginning of it, we can really get to that level of data-driven decision-making to make sure that we're putting our very, very limited dollars into the places where it can have the highest impact. And I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Ben, Mark, for the discussion. I see Christopher next and then Gordon.
I, I just want to go, I appreciate all that conversation. I want to go backwards though and just, I'm not sure we even address this one issue. I know I brought up yesterday and I heard a couple of other board members bring it up today as well. There's just, I think, a little stickiness and it's maybe in my head around the funding source with Medicaid. And that, are you banking on dollars that everybody seems, or I shouldn't characterize everybody, but a number of us have expressed concerns whether you can actually capture those? Is that one of the funding sources that feels a little less firm than some of the others? And with, could, there's a question of whether you're counting the dollars ahead of actually getting them and knowing that you can, in fact, that it will work. Anecdotally, from other individuals that I've talked to and other individuals from, or they've shared some comments, it's, it's slower and harder to actually make it land than you may be assuming. And I don't know how much backend research you've done and how conservative it is, but I don't know if we put to bed that one question about, is the Medicaid being overcounted or up too optimistic at this point?
Sure. You know, I think from our perspective as staff, we've been working on moving in this direction for about a year and a half. So there's been a lot of work, both with our technical assistance provider and hiring staff who know how to do this billing and training our staff and how to do the notes and working with availability to become a Medicaid biller and looking at how other counties in the state that are more successful at Medicaid capture than King County work. And, and while I understand that there are a lot of concerns, you know, I do feel obligated to say that, you know, for example, Spokane funds a huge portion of their system of foundational community support dollars. Like it's most of the revenue that they deploy. There are significant difficulties in King County, some of which I think we concur with at the provider level from an administrative perspective. I think one of the things that CSH did in partnership with WeAreIn to support us was look at what some of those difficulties were and position us strongly not to have some of the same ones. I think that we are, you know, hopeful that we can frankly expand on the region's ability to capture those dollars. But I, I do think that there, and again, I'm happy to, you know, provide a briefing directly for you, Christopher, or set up one with the team that's more directly working on this. I do think that the, the discussion around the difficulty of these dollars is not actually borne out by even our neighbors within Washington, you know, let alone if we begin to look nationally. And so I think that's where we landed as a, as a matter of policy and then built a budget that, to Meg's point, forecast about 85% capture, right? So we're not saying, you know, like it's going to be all of the dollars, all of the thing, right? Like, we're really trying to say, like, you know, we feel confident that this is a capturable amount of revenue. And again, we're going to do some dry runs to make sure that what we are, that the reimbursement packages that we're submitting don't kick back, that we're not surprised when we actually go to do our first drawdown. And happy to keep you briefed as that material is submitted. And, and, you know, again, what we hear back. Is that helpful?
I see Gordon next, but John, were you responding to this?
I just have, I have a hard stop. Do you, I just want to make sure that you have a quorum to be able to adopt if I leave.
Thank you, John.
I believe so, but Austin?
I was, I was unmuted, I was muted. Yes, we would, John.
Okay, thank you. Very good discussion. And I think the key on the Medicaid is to monitor, monitor, monitor. And if you have to get out, pull the plug. I, I have the same concerns that we might not get that amount of money. But I think trying for it is a good thing. So I'm satisfied with where we are. I would like a little better process with more lead time on these budget items for next year. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, John.
Gordon?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be really quick, because I want to make sure we have time to take, to consider a vote. It was a commentary and a question. The commentary was a little bit following up on the conversation about Medicaid. And a second, what, what John Chelman just said. My sensitivity as a layperson is not in the ability of the regional authority to, to be eligible or claim Medicare dollars. The sensitivity may be in the time period between submitting for reimbursement and actually receiving it, which might be wise, which may be helpful when we have a biennial, a two-year approach. Because I've been told that is one of the big challenges is that there is a lead lag with CMS. So that's the commentary. Don't have to respond to that because of people that are closer to it than I am. My question is, back to the conversation, the good colloquy between Ben and and Mark. So with the idea of flexibility, adaptability, making sure we have the funding we need for the emergent and current priorities, when we think about us as the IB and the regional authority as a ongoing entity, what is the time of year? We'd want to have that conversation with the regional authority in terms of data-informed adjustments, probable shift in seeking budget? I mean, is that like a springtime conversation? Is that a summertime conversation? Is that a fall conversation where we have three major tranches, four major tranches of money? City, county, HUD, and philanthropy? And probably be more sensitive to the rhythms of the city and the county? the, the rhythms of the city and the county and, and perhaps even HUD, although HUD, I think we have a good idea of when and how that flows. So my short answer, short, short answer to this question is if, if now's not the time to have the kind of conversation that Ben uh was suggesting to Mark, what time of year is the time to have that discussion? So it lines up with the budget process to make sure the regional authority has the resources it needs to carry out its work. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. I think um, and I defer to, to Megan and in particular Tiffany here, but um based on uh the current structure of budget submittals, the right time to have that discussion would be December and January. Um, and uh, and it is a little bit difficult in some ways as like, you know, some of the program data is still being closed out at that time. So, you know, some of the answers are not all the way there. Um, but if we wanted to have a really rich and, and, you know, multi-meeting discussion, um, we would, we would start in January um in order to be able to execute on uh a spring budget submittal and passage that then, since it needs to be then confirmed by the governing committee um at their regularly calendared meeting to be submitted to the city and county budget offices by June first. Um, so that would be my recommendation on the calendaring for, for next year, particularly given that that will be a, a new biennial uh budget.
I'm taking the prerogative of, of calling on myself now for a moment. Uh, I just want to make a, two quick comments. One on the, the Medicaid reimbursement. Um, the, the one thing I, I want to make sure that we are also thinking about in perspective that we have not asked like non-RHA service providers to, to take this on as like a major funding source in this coming year, right? What we've done is sort of say our particular program Partnership for Zero is going to, to try to punk, come to rely on this. We have funding now, we're trying to get it. And that overall, for our overall budget, we are looking at like two percent of, you know, the two hundred fifty million overall budget. And the goal, I think, is like, I mean, from my perspective, the goal of getting this Medicaid reimbursement stuff working is not to fund Partnership for Zero, which would be nice. It's to figure it out for everybody else and, and figure out a, a program that works that allows other people to then jump on the bandwagon, other service providers, like, like lead the way so that other people can follow. I don't know if that's how you see it, Meg. Uh, and Mark, but that's how I've been thinking about the Medicaid piece.
I think there's something really powerful there too that you're touching on, just that we're not, I think we would like to see, um, you know, the provider community look after these funding, but we're not gonna ask them to do anything we're not willing to do ourselves. And um, and, you know, kind of blaze a local trail that way, I guess you could say. So I think that there's something really powerful about that, that like there's, there's opportunity there to, you know, make a system-wide change sort of by example. I think that that's, that, and I, there is um a component, I think Mark, Mark referred to this, um, before, but there is a component of the um, the CSH TA that's anticipated to also involve um, technical assistance to any providers that are wanting to start to learn this as well to kind of learn alongside us. So um, that is also anticipated as part of the learning.
All right, see, we need to hand up.
Um, hi, um, I really like that ideal and having to do this dry run and then also train other providers in that and being able to access those fundings. I mean, if they're using it in a different part of the state, it should, it makes sense to um make that effort. And I just want to um support Ben and his um good words. I put that in the chat. And all this, you know, I, this is my first time and I know everyone knows that, but I not experienced. And my experience and historical experience um being indigenous, you know, we, we were kind of always told to shut up. You don't have a voice in this, in these decision-making. So we just want you to just um, agree what we're doing and uh, because we know better, you know, and that white supremacy ideology thinking, you know, um, I think dismantling and with the racial equity lens, um, I think it's important. Those conversations and those questions are very good questions. And it's always good to um learn, you know, learn to listen and listen to learn. And I, I think those questions were not really raised in before. I think we're just like, just go ahead and check off the box. And the part of the reason why I'm at this table is to do something different, you know, and that's what this is all about. Is, you know, if we've always done what we did before, then we're not going to get the different results. So I just think that um, it's okay to challenge. It's okay to ask questions. And everyone has a voice and has experience. So I think other people in their expertise in this area, arena of budget and listening to them. And I don't think it's ever too late to start, you know, doing something different, doing something new. And I think that's what's so great about America and other countries. It's communist and China, you know, the government is always like, just do what we tell you to do. You know, they don't ask the people what they want. And that's part of my experience and bringing that lens and culture to this table and being able to really have great conversation about this. And it's, it's something that we can't resolve in one day, right? And it doesn't hurt to think outside the box, you know, and be able to um have other conversations with other people and build true partnership. And I think that's a partnership that goes both ways. It's not just a one-way street. It's not one-sided. And we appreciate everyone at the table. And I think the communities that Ben raised before about the people that we serve are unsheltered relatives and are other providers. And I think there's some people that are listening in this conversation too. I'm sure they have feedback and input that we could listen to them as well and really collaborate together. And I think that's what this is all about. It's not something that is just one-sided, you know, there's always different viewpoints. And it's always good to um bring that variety, that color, you know, like the rainbow color. It's always a good symbol of that because it's all beautiful, right? Anyway, that's all I want to say. I thank everyone. I think um the staff, the whole RHA, um, the zero partnership, um, the providers, the other coalitions. I think this is a great time. It's never too late to start something new and really save lives. I think one of the other meet, uh, meetings that we had, people brought that and raised that up and really bringing people inside. It's a lot better now because I feel safer when I walk downtown because I live in the area. And, you know, I still see people suffering and a couple of times I caught, felt like I needed, you know, should I call nine-one-one? Because somebody was laying by the post office in that corner and they were covered up, you know, and I know they have the ambassadors downtown, but really, you know, um, there's other col- um organizations, the King County and all the officials and their leadership. So I think this is um, I think everyone's part, right? He made that one up. Thank you.
We need to thank you. Are you, uh, you kind of broke up there at the end of?
Oh, I, I've been having issues with my phone and I really apologize. That's why I my phone shut down at the meeting yesterday. Did you hear me?
Oh, we got, we got to hear, we got to hear you right up until that last three seconds. But we need to thank you for that. Um, and, and I wanted to, for, for the group, we're now at six o'clock here. Um, this is our allotted time for the special meeting. Uh, are there any final thoughts or comments before we uh consider a motion on this resolution?
All right. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on some of the, I, I considered doing a resolution to try and just give us more time to be flexible around prioritization. But um, I was talked off the ledge by the uh RHA staff who informed me that there were some resolutions coming from the governing committee that would um essentially do the same thing. So I um, I won't be pursuing that. That said, uh, I just, you know, I, these presentations have been very helpful, but there just hasn't been really substantive input in generating this budget. And so I personally uh don't feel comfortable approving it, uh, voting for it myself. I'll, I'll be abstaining from the vote. Uh, although if that creates quorum problems, I, I won't get in your way.
Okay. I think we should.
Juanita, also, I would feel more comfortable once we get the other seats. Um, and with Sarah Rankin and other people's expertise like Lamont, I, I would feel I'm gonna abstain as well.
Um, Austin, I think even with abstentions, you know, we still have quorum here. We would still be allowed to go to vote. Is that correct?
Uh, let me double check.
Okay.
Normally, yes.
Chair, that's, that would be correct.
Yep, that is correct.
Um, and so I'll ask, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh two?
I'll move the motion. Second.
All right, we have a second. Uh, Austin, is there any discussion? Okay, no. Austin, would you take a roll call vote for us?
Yes. Uh, member Caminos?
Yes.
Member Carvalho?
Yes.
Member Merits?
Abstain.
Member Spotted Elk?
Abstain.
Member McHenry Jr.?
Yes.
Member Patton Oud?
Aye.
Member Ready?
Aye.
And member Ross?
Aye.
The clerk has recorded six ye- ayes, zero nos, and ahs, and two abstentions. The resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero two has passed.
All right. Well, thank you to everyone for this uh thoughtful discussion and uh taking the time to meet today. Um, do we have um a call for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, say nay? All right. The motion adjourned has passed. The meeting is adjourned. We will uh see you.
I'm sorry, just one, sorry, one, one quick thing. Um, there's been a bunch of people who wanted to make comment in this meeting, but obviously we didn't have time for that. Um, Austin, could you just make sure that everybody knows how they can get comment to the implementation board? Last time it was your email. I'm sorry to do that after we just adjourned. I apologize. I just looked at my phone. I got a bunch of texts asking for people to make comments.
Um, yeah, um, absolutely. I will throw my email in chat. Uh, toss on the website, uh, austin.christopherson@kcrj.org. Um, if all public comment is submitted to me by end of day Friday, that's when I send the public comment library out to the members so they get a nice weekend read. Um, but yes, so if you submit it to me at austin.christopherson at kcrj.org, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Sorry for talking about it in the last minute. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for that, Ben. Thank you, staff, board, and uh public. Take care.